This is six to five on the new, uh, two separate parties by city council. General, the council. Well, it's not just off the table there. Representing citizens. The knowledge and understanding of which is the symbol. Right in our seat, in our calendar, or our state, or our government. Ladies and gentlemen, the papers, which play the weeks today. And consideration of all things. Yes, we're going to the last of this council, they've voted, uh, ahead of the state to be completed. The nursing place across the name. You also have not, you would call any of them, but this thing over here is just one of the handling of. We think our meetings and things, uh, not given city health or the issue that that's. This time we have the public board and the public board members. Hopefully they speak on an agenda item during the public board section of the meeting. Or is kind of the agenda item, all of the session. Speakers, we have three men as per speaker. Members of the public wishing to address council non agenda items may do so with the three men per speaker talking. Consistent with Texas folks being that council members cannot discuss non agenda items. All speakers are expected to maintain a bond with the board on consenting and following council change. Unless personal insults, vulgar, profane language is out of order. And if it's all for sure, many times possible renewal will be. Citizens wishing to, uh, expect to have a request with the city secretary, their standing as opposed to. And we have, uh, some individuals who'd like to speak. First person on agenda is Mr. Andrew Mack from Paris. Andrew Mack. Thank you. Just to be able to, uh, so. There's any answer, uh, you almost say information of the staff. Most of the, I mean, shows upwards by some time.
So then, uh, Mayor, uh, all the members, uh, staff, city attorney. Uh, my name is Sam Mac from Paris, Texas. I am here representing, uh, Stephen and executive verticals. This is a follow up comment, uh, tonight, not said for action. Just merely following up information, uh, all delivered to the city yesterday, as well as, uh, information that was sent directly. Uh, just want to give a comment on three things. Uh, number one, we were here, uh, beginning April, uh, seeking approval for a plat. We, uh, received, uh, both, uh, denial of what that, uh, we're, we're here to spend five minutes on three things. Uh, number one, uh, we have a certificate of plat approval, I understand, and also sent, you know, they had something to me. Uh, yesterday, even the day before. And, uh, we're, we're just asking that, uh, the city, uh, right that according to law. Uh, law was just quite clear about the timeline for plat approval. Uh, number two, uh, everything that we presented, uh, with the provisions following three different, uh, opportunities to meet your staff, consultants in advance, uh, was determined in advance of the hearing last April, last month. Uh, in general considerations, we met, uh, with the, the revisions that were presented. We also, uh, we've asked that we consider this, uh, this evening, I realize we can't take action on this. Over asking, since it's a, a not an action requirement, it's just a merely certificate of approval. City, uh, take action within, uh, perfectly limited, white, like states of action. Uh, also contained in the handout this evening, this is a pin from the attorney general. Uh, summarizing the same requirements that state, all states of action. So, we just thank you for the opportunity to, uh, present this to you this evening. And I ask that you please, uh, in accordance with law, do the right thing, and then we should be certificate of plat approval. Uh, for the providing edition. And, uh, that, uh, whole script is contained both the handout as well as the plat documents that were supplied. They're prepared and ready for city charter and according as presented to us. Thank you, Mr. Mac.
And the number one, other thing individuals speak on non agenda items. We will move to consent out. Minutes, pretty speaking, members of the council, minutes, all being, uh, April sixth, twenty twenty four. All being, April twenty third, twenty twenty four, first shot, twenty third, twenty twenty four. Nice second, twenty eighth, twenty fourth, uh, and April, apologies, following. Also have, uh, voters, persons, city secretary, report, police department, portion of the board, and five, uh, of the board. Uh, and you have, uh, one of the reports, I think, that, uh, on the tech, received that as a physical file. So, once the question to the house, uh, on consenting, uh, on the taking motion, should be approved or dissent.
I'll make a motion to approve.
No question, this role presents motion, maybe just last. We need a second, I have a second question, we have all of the, uh, motions compared to that, we consent out. Act six, mayor, some presentations, and nine, we do have one presentation, if you need to make. First of all, I say, um, if they have anything that they want to say.
She's like saying that the audio where the police car was raised, she did exactly what he was talking, you guys don't get some part of it. Because he came in three weeks ago, this Thursday, or something like, ooh. But, they did find out, they went together, good call. He's a regular one, he's, he's, what is he gonna do?
Anyway, all right, with that, I come to, on behalf, members of the city council, staff, we want to carry the house. This role has been a founding member of the city council for a number of years now. And it's sort of a city with a lot of dedication and determination and commitment, very, 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 very strong on this and support. So, he's, he's kind of, we're sorry to put him, we, we will find somebody to sit in the chair and cure the world of ourselves. But we appreciate so much Brian, and what he's done, and what he does here in the, uh, businesses and businesses broadly. And all the things that he attempts to do, so, I'm on behalf, uh, city council and staff, as I said, uh. Thank you for such, I mean, just wish you the studio, the city, uh, with how deep his appreciation with your boss and what he earned. Recognition, support, dedication, the city, for, thank you for your years of service at all times, ninety, twenty, twenty fourteen, ninety, twenty fourteen. That's all. Thank you. With the city, our good people, that's it. So, can I please ask you, you, uh, in the last, uh, ask our new members, lady, woman, person, go forward. And sadly, it's going to finish with the oath office of the mayor and the two of all of them.
When it says I, you say your name, and then for your position that you're holding, just say Alderman, and you'll say your name, okay? So, I, uh, do solemn swear, that I will faithfully, execute the duties of the office of. Execute. Of the state of Texas. And the city of Negro. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend. The constitution and laws. Of the United States. And of this state. And this city. So help me God. And before we get started on the new business, I want to just remind everybody, let me sure and call Andy the microphone. Since we are recording, can we just help with the, uh, let me sure, calling the mic, those are probably a bit louder.
I mean, just say it here, the why, you have this massive choice. It's not to have a particular perspective, and we, we, all second, and we, uh, this lady brought up to the class of a lot of them. She says up here, that I don't, so, here you go. A lot of them can, can, this is continuing service. Next item on the agenda is to go back to mayor protein. So, uh, we'll entertain nominations from mayor protein. I would like to, uh, hovering, hovering, uh, nomination to hold in any hand. We have a nomination. Eric, here we go, by my permission, it sounds like it is, uh, if we look back, uh, all of us, the mayor, the one on these, please. Congratulations, Chris. Now, not a notice, uh, for that, uh, or, you will.
Uh, thank you, everybody. I was here to talk about Ben and Kevin Waters' fire emergency. Yes, I am, I'm a fight the mayor, and Eric will take all of them, chief, and attorney, and I mean. And my name's Doug Off, I'm, uh, on board for, kind of watch by, also a candidate for this one. So, we might see this sort of pass, uh, the brief fact about this, I was, uh, the agency started up after the fires, and all of them are members of that agency. It kind of died out, it started back after twenty fifteen, and I was asking, uh, several of the representatives, and then they run with his president, and I don't know how that happened, but that's on another story. The reason I'm here, though, is with what we think, she go back to twenty twenty, started by, who also interested in your form. And we got to serve with the capacity, Walter Dogg, which also represented on the board. But, uh, the judge I think is important to give to all of you, the reason is, early on, after five hundred seven. The agency signed a memorandum of decree, those exit minutes of waters, and a long way close, but we later. And, uh, they didn't sign a contract with us, because they did not have water level set, but now they do. And as the agents wrote them up here, we feel like in future, we might have to start hot water, and they do have to, and then. So, what I want to ask you tonight is if you could replace Walter Dogg, someone to, uh, to serve on board. If you decide to ship, or if you don't, be part of the agency, I would still need someone to represent Negro, so we can get above. And then you all can, uh, purchase to pay more attention, I'll be on there. However, I'm not talking favor, because, uh, I don't know if you all love or not, but we've got a drought, and it's out from the end this way. I may be rude, you know, and right after they rotate, if we wait to return all our water costs, and that depends out, it's too late. This agency was set in place to be the go between North Texas and the entities of being water bank accounts, who will pack this agency, who actually buy the water, bank account, and, 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 true. Another thing that you guys have submissions for now, will be willing to go to cities. One of the problems we had before was when we did that, we did it seven, to go out for rent, we did not get any commissions for it, we were poor, we got this. And now we have a commission for it, so we can, so we can, we can probably get it self, so we can be fast and do it all. So, and that's a, you all have a question to me? I actually sent a copy of the water laws, sadly, it's supposed to bring it up, we all, I found out a year, that it happened. She did it.
We, we, we have a portion coming up very quickly, and some of it, uh, was, uh, I lost, too. I don't know if you want to, 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 I've been having some, uh, questions, and please, you have a sort of, uh, after the, after the, I thought, I thought.
Really, I didn't expect that, yeah, we, we, so, so, we will, we will, uh. Uh, so, before we do, we're not, we're, 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 we're really wants to do it, and we're not, first, uh, uh. Uh, and what, what I just, uh, played a week, once, uh, we, 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 I think, for, for, you know. And, uh, now I would let the official, I'm like, we all, of course, first maybe we will let officials, the new president, that not by side, that's probably his, whoever's above. But also, windows will happen to be placed in our board, certainly we can, uh, certainly, um, you said. You know, I'm, 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 I'm pretty calm, he's carved out, he's got a, he's turned it back, and I saw it three days, I think it's similar.
I apologize if I was going to make, uh, I was going to get a picture of an actual training facility that's been built. We want to use HONEX boxes, the storage box, the overseas box. And basically what we want to do is we'll get three of them. We'll have two forty footers. We'll stack those side by side and then there's a forty footer on the end. They'll be welded together. We'll go in, cut out walls, make ruins. Uh, we'll have doors, windows, and it's basically a mock house. It'd be a place for us to go in and train with live fire. All that we really need from you is privilege or someplace to put it. I thought it through and I know Chief Dixon had even talked very briefly about whether that surf plan is their live fire, their firing range. I wouldn't impose that. Problem with that is the water supply. Uh, here I've got a hydrant that is right at six hundred feet from the facility. Um, where I'm proposing to put it, it would be three hundred feet away from the, uh, the electric substation. Would be four hundred feet away from the church that's east, roughly east of there. And then we'd be about two hundred feet away from the pump house. Uh, I feel like the correct location is again, it's, it's easy access, it's easy in and out. We've got a locked driveway, it's already kind of a lock gate, and I'm only six hundred feet from the hydrant. So, if we do live fire, obviously we're going to have to have water. So having that hydrant there is crucial to being able to supply us with water. If we were to do a half area, we can all let training begin. Um, like I said, we've already got the boxes located. We've got two other apartments around us that are on board that, that kind of want to, you know, maybe go in with us. It's not a hundred percent yet, but so that way we can train and put the apartments around us as well. So, I've got the ball rolling. It really looks good place to, to start. And that's, that's kind of what we're asking for, from you.
How big of an area is the, like, level?
So with the boxes, obviously, we're going to leave sixty by, by, I guess, boxes ten feet wide. Say sixty by twenty. Uh, we're not going to take up a huge area. You know, the boxes will be on, and they will be taking up that area. Obviously, when we're training, we're going to take up quite a little space, but that's, I mean, most of the time, if we're talking about training, we can deal with it. So it's how likely we'll be in the way for the systems that would be, be taking brush, obviously. Let's see when we can, our weekend deals, so. Uh, we, I, I will tell you that we wouldn't be doing live fire. Um, I don't know if any of y'all are familiar with NFA, National Fire Protection Agency. They have some pretty high standards as far as live fire training for fire facilities. Um, and we would, we would follow those to the feet. Uh, myself, and we actually have another number of apartments that are trained under that code. And they'll let go inside and out for fire, for fire training. Uh, it would never be an instance where we're burning couches or, it would only be natural vegetation. It's basically the standard. It says we can only burn natural vegetation.
One of the apartments we're supposed to go into is possibly dangerous, got a brand name, it's got a brand new smoke machine, which is designed for this, correct?
Yeah. So, I mean, that's also an apartment too, which puts out smoke.
Well, we could, we could, yeah.
And the reason I asked Chief Dixon to come in on this, it's hard, it's like a verb here, I was going to contradict, uh, Chief Dixon on this. Uh, you know, we, we kind of offered them as well, you know, this is going to be set up as a mock house. This is something we'd like to utilize as well, go in and, you know, do their training as well, so. Or that way it's not just us.
Just, just the location, it's just in my mind, is it like that, uh?
Rose pile. Yeah, so it's good, that's not a very similar one. If you go into the rose pile gate, well, the component is directly to the left as soon as you go inside the gate. The reason we won't do that, that's, that's very, I can't ever remember anything being there under the lock pile. We've got the hydrant that's just, it's just south of there, off the rock road. We've got a rock road that's, you know, it's going to allow us access into those.
I'd like to make a motion that we're going to turn up, uh, the training for, uh, city area.
Chief, I was asking, uh, how important is the lock gate? I told her we have this house locked.
Containment, you say locked?
We try to protect.
I know there's already a danger down there, but.
Containment's locked. Even if somebody got in there, it's, it's coming out of walls. But it, it's still.
Before we move forward, uh, let me just ask only a question. We have other agencies coming in to train as well. The question I have, I'm not telling you, I'm not having that, the same issue, I think Chief Dixon would have, uh, officers coming in. Wasn't the caution about that, that officers coming outside. And the best, so I think it's, yeah, that was, that was the issue, yeah. If they have a, they're, if there's, you know, if there's no, it would have been a lot of issues.
If it's a, if, if ever a fire department's around us forever, use it, they would never use it without us. It would never be an instance where, if it's not city, it's not called. And it would never be an instance where they would be just without us there. And you're, you've not got to follow them, so you need to make some, uh, figure out a number of, um.
Oh, we have a motion, Mr. Paul. Four minutes.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Sir. You have a second? You have a second? Follow him everywhere.
I'll answer a question that I didn't hear asked, because I thought of, uh, some of the things, I don't have a time for anything. We're, we're just working on it. Be two months, be six months.
Question, no doubt, I just question on this, it's a lot of, it's very formal thing could be printed out, it's a muscle that needs to be thought of. Science, sanding, if you can do plenty of hours, that, that is something that would be, something that would cover.
Twenty-four, listen, lawyer can assume everybody that does this. So if you're asking me to bulletproof the insurance, will you, some of the acts out there, there are a lot of, the don't do, or on them out there. Everybody's been sued there, everybody, the best thing to have is some insurance policy that covers that. So you're not recommending the city government, so, uh, should we like to go to court for us? So just get something that covers what's on it there and have a legal, so that's, well, it doesn't, it doesn't help.
Now, for these guys, we, we know, we're doing, working on, certainly, there were some of the, I don't think, now, I don't think they would do that.
And we're all ins for many, we're every part of it, so, like, if we get hurt, uh, I guess on training, uh, I'm a legal. If you're wrong over a record, you're broke, but I'm sure they're all, you're sure, also. But hopefully they do, or not, not get happened. That's why we're training. It's hope, hopefully training, we don't have to.
Hey, well, it sounds like, uh, a group of announcements that has been in the form of, please. All right, going from the agenda of the same room service cows at the fire station. Uh, last week, sir, you know, there's, there's, uh, and, uh, Mr. Oliver standing for the commissioner for. Asking that a non-ambulance in place in three rows, and they went forward saying, that is, and they placed for it. And they, and it was, um, in the discussion, there was discussion about other kinds of requirements in terms of housing. And places for staff to stay. And so I'm going to ask them to talk about what they found out about that house there. And basically, the commissioner for, who's sending ambulance. And then they asked me, I, uh, supported adoption, I said, yes, I do. Obviously, I'm from near the end of the town, you're now, also part of, I've got my council, I'm a council. Uh, and towards money spend, I had no motion about that. So that's all we have, um, pleasure, no, we're going to ask them, Chief, yes, um, how about, uh?
I'll add, I'll add one, I'll be, this, this is preliminary, did, I got, uh, I was approached a nice second. By Judge Cunningham, and, and his, his basic question was, can you house an ambulance? Uh, currently we have one layover, and he said, yes, we could house an ambulance. We also have an upstairs that is completely unfinished. Know what? Mayor has in front of him is bid to finish out that upstairs to house one ambulance crew, which would be two people. Um, I've met, myself and Mayor over there as well, we've met with, um, the commissioners for. We've already been twice, talked to them. I've met with one fire department chief, uh, Chief Riddlet. And he's actually been in our, in our, our fire department, looked and kind of give us some ideas and things that he needs. So that we can, we can accommodate him and have that ambulance in our fire station. This bid is very preliminary, there's actually some stuff in that is not in it that, that Chief Riddlet is asking for. So that, that number will go up. Um, by how much? I don't know. I gotta, I had to ask him again. Obviously, this is just one bid, and I don't know how, you know, I don't know how to go about if they're going to want their own bids or what. But I wanted to get a bid from the contractor, just so that we can lay out that number.
Bid, the bid is required, charging thirty-seven five, um. They, they talked a little bit earlier in the meeting, so they, they ordered some things. Specifically, we have to be done, one, he said the stairs, we have to be replaced. He said, my man, the upstairs in lock order, for the scats, gals, that come over here, that they're involved. And he just, the things, and based on what he said, and what's, if he really wanted to be, presumably more than this amount in terms of, based on what he, what he.
Yeah, and I, I talked to him as well, the, the inside staircase, he was, he was concerned about it. Have a staircase up, he was a little concerned about access. Um, I can see where he's coming from. And also, and I actually have the bid for it, but it's not in that, it's exterior staircase, basically a second bedroom, yes. Um, but that is for two bedrooms, one bathroom, and then block storage for the master bedroom. Basically, what that does, this clear, the clear said, is that replacing the staircase and then adding an exterior staircase, it's the second bedroom.
What, what, uh, it's not for us, that, that sort of, none of these, you know, help to someone conscious, or that's one of the problems. Uh, again, I will tell you, I think that all of us, uh, back on the citizen coming outside, I believe that citizens, um, well, they're putting, they're putting, and they're putting the properly, like, an ambulance. And we know what it's like, not to have an ambulance located here. And I live on Main Street, and I can tell you, almost every morning, without fail, I can predict that ambulance is on that main street, headed out to the west. Uh, they originally bought around here, and they were laying building, bars associated with flying, uh, to create the environment that can be necessary for ambulance. There was a whole lot of, they don't have gas stations, gas, they don't have nursing home, they don't have some things, and we're really needing one of these here. So the issue that, I'm a, I'm a, the commissioner for, was the issue of funding, uh, being able to fund this to do that out of there. So that's not an issue, that's, that's, I'm sorry. Um, I don't think, personally, I don't think there's an issue at all. I mean, I'm, I'm speaking to the need, the council itself, but I don't think there's a question. I don't know, having that said, here is a good direction, and, uh, just about in place, getting your question. Um.
I absolutely think you need a, um. I'm going to go back to, uh, I, 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 I guess, true. You have an idea, I don't know, maybe a word. I need a, a, a. I, I need to break, uh, I do, sure. Oh, well, that's, uh.
I don't think it's worth, off the county, I guess, one year, but I initially guess there'd be vouchers and also, also some other places we would like to avail.
I, I, I have a, obviously, we have, that, that, that's, that's a good issue. Uh, so that's, that's a question, uh, so is there any, I think, what do you want to, please, that, uh? And we have to figure out how to go ahead with the money. And I think a lot of, going back to commissioners and saying, uh, we probably come to some help with getting them all. And, uh, even if they have a sum, but we work on it.